Good evening. The Thursday, August 14, 2025 meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Funke.
Here.
Commissioner Gooding.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seisong.
Here.
Let the record show Commissioner Lai was absent.
Next is adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Next is the consent calendar. If there is any member of the public who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar, please state so now. Staff, can you set a thirty-second timer for those at home? Any member of the commission would like to remove an item?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thirty seconds has passed. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Oral communications. If anyone wishes to address the commission concerning an item not on tonight's agenda, you may do so now. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience. I see no one. Can we set a one-minute timer for those at home? And while we're waiting on that, the commission did receive one written communication, a letter from Cynthia Rudolph regarding Agenda Item B, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing. Ten seconds. Okay. A minute has passed. Did we receive any more written communications? No? Okay. Moving on to new business. Tonight, we have a public hearing concerning 335 Mariposa Street. It's a grading review 2025-ex-01. It's an R-2 residential zoning district. This is a grading review for construction of a new 3,595-square-feet duplex and two 733-square-foot attached ADUs. The soil cut is approximately 477. And CBU Construction is the applicant, and Lam Yai and Catherine Shi are the owners. Staff, may we have the presentation?
Thank you, Chair. As introduced, this agenda item is for a grading permit review associated with new construction on the vacant property at 335 Mariposa, involving, as you said, approximately 477 cubic yards of soil cut and export from the site. The proposal would allow construction of a new three-story duplex, two detached ADUs, and a retaining wall along three sides of the property. Planning Commission grading review is required when more than 50 cubic yards of earthwork is to be moved in any operation within central Brisbane. Brisbane Municipal Code, Chapter 15.01, establishes the requirements for the commission's review for grading permits. The approximately 400, excuse me, 4,997-square-foot lot comprises approximately half of the former Brisbane Inn parking lot, located near the southwest corner of Mariposa Street and Visitation Avenue. It is surrounded by residential uses to the west and south. Those are shaded in green. Might be a little washed out on the projector up there. And mixed uses along Visitation Avenue to the east, shaded in blue. There are no trees or structures located on the site, but roughly half of the site is paved. The brown shaded area is the portion of the former Brisbane Inn not zoned for residential use as the primary use. In November 2023, a building permit application was submitted to the Community Development Department to construct the duplex and two detached ADUs on the subject property. During plan check review, the plans indicated the grading to be less than 50 cubic yards of soil export below the threshold for planning commission review in the R2 district. And so the building permit was subsequently issued on January 30, 2025, following approval by all city departments. The project complied with all applicable development standards, including floor area, lot coverage, setbacks, building height, landscaping, and parking, as well as the allowable number, size, and location of ADUs permitted under state law. In April of this year, code enforcement investigated a complaint at the subject property and determined the scope of grading shown on the approved building permit had been exceeded. Specifically, the amount of grading on the site surpassed the indicated amount on the plans. The contractor submitted a planning application for grading review to cure the violation that same month, and it included an updated grading plan with a revised estimated quantity of earthwork. The proposed project, as approved under the building permit issued in January 2025, would develop the unapproved site with a 3,595-square-foot three-story duplex and two detached 733-square-foot ADUs. The structures shown in the site plan on the screen have not changed from the approved building permit. The updated grading plan included with this request proposes 477 cubic yards and a new retaining wall along both side lot lines and the rear lot line. It's clouded in red. The wall would be setback or offset approximately 12 inches from the adjacent property lines and be no more than six feet in height at its highest point along the rear of the property. The height of the retaining wall steps down as it extends along each side lot line until it terminates at least 15 feet from the front lot line. New landscaping is proposed along the retaining wall to further screen and soften its appearance, as shown in the graphic on the right. The approved building permit will have to be revised to reflect the proposed increase to the volume of earthwork and new retaining wall related to the increased earthwork. And all city departments will review the revision for compliance with applicable development and construction standards. To approve the grading permit, the commission must make the findings contained within Brisbane Municipal Code, Section 1501-110. There are four findings. They're indicated on the screen. And findings three and four are combined since they are related. Detailed findings are included in Exhibit A of the draft resolution. But in summary, the proposed grading is designed to fit comfortably with the site context and natural topography, to the extent feasible, given the proposed grading allows for the structures to comply with the minimum setback areas, required number of off-street parking spaces, and state requirements for the construction of ADUs, while limiting the overall height of the structures above street level, also in compliance with the district maximum, while safely transitioning to the existing contours of the surrounding properties. At its highest point along the rear lot line, the retaining wall would not extend more than six feet in height above the grade. That's in compliance with the maximum height allowed for retaining walls within setback areas. And it both steps down and is screened with landscaping to be visibly unobtrusive when viewed from the street. Last, there are no trees proposed nor required to be removed as part of the proposed grading. This concludes staff presentation with a recommendation of approval of grading review 2025-ex-01 via adoption of the attached resolution. Any questions at this time?
Thank you, Jeremiah. Any questions? Commissioner Gooding?
Yes, thank you. And we can ask the applicants as well, but perhaps the staff has a shortened explanation of it. Originally, the permit was applied for on the premise or the representation that there would be less than 50 cubic yards of dirt being removed, correct?
Correct, the building permit.
And it turns out that there's almost 500 cubic yards of dirt that are involved or presumably required for stability of the project. Is that correct?
Yes, the request for this grading view and what would need to be revised on the building permit is closer to 500 cubic yards.
Do you have any understanding of why the original estimate was so wildly off in terms of the removal?
Yes, the applicant shared it was a mistake made. I'm sure they can elaborate a little more.
Okay. All right, we'll wait for them then.
Oh.
There might be some more questions of staff.
Yes, just in a minute, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, those are my questions.
Just curiosity, how it was discovered? Like, that more was being removed, apparently? Like, is this, is it?
There was a code complaint. And so, code enforcement officer investigated and did a quick kind of calculation at the volume of earthwork. And it was kind of easy to determine that was over the 50.
So it's like a concerned citizen? Is that what, basically, like a third someone?
Yeah, a confidential complaint.
Okay. I just wanted to make for me kind of the question of how in general things like this might be discovered if you're removing 10 times as much dirt as you said you would.
Yeah.
But anyway.
And it's not exclusive to just this project. You know, we often get concerns about any number of construction projects. Is it permitted? What's going on?
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Commissioner Gooding?
One follow-up, please. And this is sort of about my general being bonded about asking for permission rather than forgiveness on projects like this and the ramifications of, you know, not asking for permission. What are the ramifications to this applicant already in terms of what he will have to do to submit a permit application that's in compliance? Are there additional fees, additional expenses?
Well, there is a fee for this permit review. And they lost quite a lot of time on their project. So there's sort of indirect consequences from the... So that this permit fee has a, or this application has its own permit fee, so an additional cost. And there's also additional time to get this approved. So they've lost out months on their construction timetable.
So the monetary cost of this error is an additional permit fee for this new grading permit application?
There will be need to be a revision done to the original building permit, and there are some additional fees for that, mostly for plan checking. And a grading permit needs to be obtained from Public Works. There's a fee for that as well, based off of the volume of earthwork.
Is there any statutory fine or penalty for having not disclosed the extent of grading work on the outset?
I'm not aware of a statutory one. We do have our sort of standard umbrella zoning enforcement penalty for noncompliance is a similar one under the building permit, but that's at the discretion of, say, the building official or the director on a case-by-case.
At whose discretion?
So it's the building official's discretion for building permits and then the director for planning applications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you. I have no questions. We'll now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Please.
Thank you so much for coming today. Yeah, so Douglas, for your question. Yeah, it was miscalculated and obviously overviewed. It's kind of looked like a flat lot, so I believe the civil engineer received kind of an impression. And once we start to dig, obviously, the soil got also expensive. And that's also create more cubic yard to be removed. So I told them to be accurate and as well include the gradings for the foundation, because he did not include those. So I told them to basically get all the soil, you know? So that's how we got to this point. And I told them, you know, whatever it is, we want to go the right way and not to get into compliance violations and stuff like this. So this is how we got here. And we want to fix it. Obviously, the same month, I right away submitted the same required plans that needed. And yeah, you know, we got a complaint also a few days ago on a neighbor that obviously had a dirt pile. We didn't want to touch it, because we were like, okay, we got a violation. We're not going to move anything. Once she said that, we right away, the same day, covered it, sent it to the planning department at the same day to make sure we, you know, everybody's going to be happy, yeah. So that's for that question, yeah.
Okay, just a quick follow-up to that. So that, so the amount of dirt that's on the property, so that's always covered, you're saying?
No, it wasn't. And then, once we heard a complaint, right away, the same day, we covered it up.
Okay, so is it covered with a tarp?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's always going to be covered while?
It's all going to be until we get green light again from the city, you know? It's not going to be touching or any equipments moving there.
Okay. And then, when you do start working and at the end of the day, it'll be covered, anything, any dirt that's?
Every day, yeah. Yeah, I also, before I started the project, I went through the whole neighborhoods and gave them a couple of little, you know, things and stuff and to remember us. And, but unfortunately, you know, obviously, we didn't have a grading permit, and it was overviewed, so we had to pause. And yeah, you know, but in the end of the day, I tried to keep everyone happy also in the neighborhood, you know? And let them know I'm here. Gave them my number, you know, to make sure if they have any complaint issues, I'm right here, you know? So all of them know me. But yeah, you know, we'll definitely cover it up every day.
Okay, Commissioner Gooding, do you have a follow-up question?
Just, yeah, a couple. So who, exactly whose oversight was it that instead of 50 cubic yards, it was 500 cubic yards? I mean, that's an awful, that's a ridiculously large mistake.
So at the beginning, also, there is a retaining wall that required there. And that retaining wall wasn't in the approved plans. So in order to get the retaining wall, we need to also get more cubic yard that wasn't calculated in the beginning.
But that's my question, is why wasn't the retaining wall in the original plans?
Because when we did it, we was thinking that we're going to do the footing, you know? And so it will be dirt covered up. So will not be anything that's going to support the soil, because it will be the house itself and soil. But then we decided that we want to, you know, have a retaining wall there that will hold it properly. So in case of a rainy season come, we don't want the soil to start to get, you know, loosey there. So yeah, that's for that, yeah. But how was it, why was so much off and who was overviewed on? I can take the blame on me at this point, you know, because I was the one that's submitting the plans. And we got the right cubic yard, but then he, you know, we got it changed, not the right one, but we got almost, you know, like around 200. And then he was taking off the foundations and stuff, so we got to really small one. The impression he received from a flat lot was, you know, that cubic yard, and I submitted this way, yeah.
Any other questions? No?
I just have procedural questions for staff. So when a project like this?
Thank you.
When a project like this comes to planning department or wherever they go to get permission, do they have slopes and things like that on there? On there, I guess, like, I don't know?
You mean with the building permit?
Right.
Yeah, there was a grading plan with the building permit.
Okay.
And it had estimated earthworks. It had, you know, what they were, where they were planning to cut and fill. That was all included with the original building permit. It did not match what, you know, what happened later in the field and what is being proposed here tonight. Needs revision.
I guess my question is, was the slope of the lot on there? Like, do you have to put the slope on there?
Indirectly. It's there because the grading plan had the elevations, you know, of the current grade. And from there, you can calculate slope.
I guess, I just don't understand how, I'm just trying to figure out like how, if the plans have the slope on it and it says it's going to be 50 cubic feet, turns into 500 and...
Well, I think, as Yossi was just saying, the original plan was to not have that retaining wall or not have to cut so much, because they were going to have their footings buried in the soil. Kind of use the existing grade as is, so you wouldn't have to dig so much. But then it sounded like they changed the, what their plan of attack, so to speak, to make it totally flat and have retaining wall. So that would also give you a much greater grading quantity than trying to just put the footings in the existing dirt, because you wouldn't have to remove so much.
But if you make a change like that, don't you have to resubmit the plans to the?
You need a revision, yes.
Okay, and that wasn't done?
No.
Okay, so I guess why wasn't it done?
Yeah, Yossi, if you go to the microphone, please.
Yeah, we getting the grading permits. And at the same time, we're going to submit, we have everything ready for the retaining walls. And obviously, I will go to a revision, yeah.
No, no, I guess my question is, why didn't you file that before you started the work? You changed your plan, right?
We changed.
You had an original plan.
Yeah.
And then you changed it. Why didn't you submit the change to the planning department?
So we dig, we got the approved plans. We start digging and we saw the necessary, that how necessary is need a retaining wall there. So then we right away, you know, at the same time, we got also the violation. Like, two days, we opened the job, find out. It wasn't the same two days that we opened the project. And then at that point, yeah, we already got all the plans to resubmit it, yeah.
I guess what I'm not understanding is, you made a decision to change the plan that, you decided to do something that was different than what was submitted to the planning department, right?
The retaining wall, yeah.
You decided, you made that decision, right? Let's say you did that, you submitted your plans, and on day one, you decided to change the plan. Why didn't you go back to the planning? Why didn't you go to planning and say, we're going to change our plan?
Mm-hmm. It was happening at the same time we observing all of it. You know, they came with the excavators, they start dig. They took some dirt out. The excavator called me. I came day after over there. I supposed to come back. And before I came back at the end of the day, the viola, you know, the code enforcement guy, he came, gave us the violation and stop order. And then I figured, okay, there is grading problem here. There is a lot of other stuff. Obviously, we'll get into a revision. I spoke to Jeremiah about it right away. And yeah, you know, I mean, we already got all the calculation, engineering, everything for the retaining wall at the same kind of time that we got the violation thing, you know, like right after that.
How much soil did you remove before you got the violation?
We removed over there, probably like around, I got to check it out with the contract, you know, with the subcontractor that did it. But I estimate, of course, it was more than 30 or so, you know? And, but we was expecting it, because we doing grading lots and soil is getting expensive and never get really calculated right by the civilians. Obviously, it was more off than usual, I have to say, you know, be honest. But we wasn't thinking it will be like that much. With the retaining wall, we was figuring we will go back, you know, and resubmit everything again with the civil engineer, civil plans, and, you know, get it all figured out.
How much do you think has been removed so far?
It's like, I believe, like around maybe 80 to around 90-ish. I think so, you know? I can't really, you know, tell exactly. I can ask for how many trucks and pair the trucks, I will know.
I guess, why didn't you guys stop at 50 and then resubmit your plans?
So I guess, you know, the contractors, it was two days. It was very fast, you know, kind of thing. And so it's pretty much, you know, been a little bit oversight as far as like in two days. And also, the violation came right away. So we just basically paused everything, you know, and said, okay, let's do it right. Let's do it the way they should be, you know? And the same months, we resubmit everything, you know? So we was really, really pressing everybody to get it done and, you know, to show to the city that we're not dragging it right now for five months, waiting for the winter to come. And this thing over there will be more disaster than now. So, yeah, so trying to do the best over here. We got an approved plan. So for me, I got the impression, you know, obviously, engineer miscalculated, and we oversighted. But yeah, you know, in the end of the day, I, you know, I want to do it right, you know? I have no reason to not pull a grading permit and pull, you know, an entire approved plans, yeah. Yeah, where's the winner? Yeah, the civil?
And through the chair, real quick. It's not uncommon on a, say, building permit that the plans, how they're drawn up, this is what the, what is intended to be constructed, but that in the field, situation is just a little bit different. Or once you start to get going, you realize you need to make a change. And, you know, you're, the contractors are doing a little bit, and they might go a little beyond the scope before they stop. Even with the best of intentions to stop and get the revision, there's certainly some that might just keep going and going. But, you know, they won't go and stop immediately at, say, what the plans say, just because the change of the field, they might go a little beyond today. All right, this is what we need to do and kind of get it all pre-advanced in the field and then submit the revision.
But that's fine. That's fine, but I get this distinct impression that we wouldn't be here or had there not been a citizen complaint, they would have gone and done whatever they were going to do.
Those building permits, the plans would have been inspected. So if they had built the project not in compliance with the plans when they went out for the inspection and there was work, it would have been caught through the city inspection process.
And what would have been the monetary ramification of that?
No difference. Well, actually, no, there would be no difference in terms of what the financial implications are.
I mean, is there any? Is there any result, any, you know, finer penalty for essentially blowing off the process? I think, I sense that that's the concern of one or two of my fellow commissioners is that, you know, asking for forgiveness and not permission is not okay. And that we shouldn't really kind of let it slide just for an extra permit fee.
Yeah, I mean...
That's my personal opinion, and I'm only one of five.
Well, there is a provision to fee, you know, charge more fee. But in this particular case, the building, what we would be permitting the wall, was not constructed. So there's no, you know, there's no building permit for an as-built structure that we would typically, you know, double fee somebody for. You know, what if this Public Works Director decides to do in terms of a grading permit fee or penalties associated with a grading permit fee? I don't know. So that would be in his, I defer to him as to what he wants to do with the charge on a grading permit that will be required.
Any more questions? Just one follow-up, and it's not that big of a deal. But I'm just curious as to what motives there would be for the applicant to do this? I mean, an innocent mistake versus if he had declared how much soil he had intended to dig up initially? I mean, is that, would there have been a difference in charge or work or delays? Or what? Can you explain that, John?
Well, probably, if this had all been done kind of per, per the normal process, he would have been in front of you. When did they pull their building permit?
Yeah, it was, building permit was submitted in November.
November. So they would have been in front of you, because the yardage would have been identified as being subject to planning commission review. They would have done all that before they obtained their building permit. So in a sense, the cost is to them, because now they started a construction project, they had to put themselves on hold for 30 days, 45 days, whatever it's taken.
Months.
So in a sense, they've cost themselves time and money by, you know, not following the rules the proper, the proper way. So that's really the only difference. So procedurally, they'd need a grading permit. They would have been in front of you. And they would have saved themselves a revision to the building plans as well. So they've actually cost themselves more time and money by heading down this path.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I actually wondered, the original thing, because you were asking about the incentive, wasn't it? I guess, being below the threshold, right? That could save you some time provisionally. But I assume the cost of moving the dirt, there's, the injuries only, it's just the number of truckloads that you pay for, right? I mean, that's completely borne by the builder in any case, right? So it's, I don't feel it's like a violation, like we're, you're operating outside of the code and polluting something, you know? It's entirely borne by, by the builder.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come up.
Hi, hi, commissioners. I'm Carl Lamb, I'm one of the owners. My brother and I and my wife own the property. It's our family's property, of course, and we've been in, yeah, we're just Brisbane residents for our entire lives. I think the one key thing, I think there's questions about like the monetary cost for our family. Of course, we didn't, nobody wanted this to happen, like, it was pretty fast, like Yossi had mentioned. There is for sure like a delay, and it's, it's been, I think, with this process, it's probably going to be, like, we started, I think, back in May. So it's like four months, so it's pretty substantial for our family. Especially, we're also concerned with, like, rain coming, and again, nobody wants that. And I don't want, you know, we'd have to put in like erosion control and things like that with this pile because of, because we intended to kind of do it in the summertime, right? With the foundation work. But originally, I think there was a question about like, why was the 50, like, 10 times different than the 500 or like the 477 now that's estimated? Originally, I think there was some email exchange too, like, the original plans. Reza, our engineer, is actually on the, on the line and can comment a little bit more. But it was actually 280, but there was questions around like, it's only removing like four to five feet of dirt, but it's like, it's a long property. So it ended up being like, so it is basically a miscalculation originally. And yeah, that's kind of what happened. But I did want to highlight that Reza, the engineer, can speak technically to some of these issues if you wanted to ask more. But we wanted to make sure like our engineer triple-checked the work before we resubmitted for this application, work on Yossi, so. Yeah, it's like pretty flat in the front, and then, and, you know, civil, Reza told me that basically civil is like never perfect for like soil estimations. It's like 200, could be like 300, right? So just up to the job, right? When you get into actual conditions. You want to speak?
Sure.
Daniel.
Our contractor also had a lot of rental equipment rented out for months and months. So he's still renting out, and he's kind of bleeding money there as well. So, yeah, so that's just like monetary impact there as well. That's all I wanted to comment, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think our structural engineer is on the call as well, so if he wants to make a comment.
Yes, I see some attendees in the Zoom. What is the name, sorry? Reza? Could he be the iPhone? Because definitely not those two. Yeah, I don't know if, oh, Tracy's the architect. Is he in, is he on his iPhone? There's someone without a name.
I don't really have any questions for him.
Yeah, yeah. No, we don't.
No, yeah.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else would like to comment that's here? Okay, why don't we, Julia, open it up for about 30 seconds for any remote comments? Okay, 30 seconds has passed. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Second?
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Okay, let's discuss. Commissioner Funka, you want to start?
I am, I think I've heard enough, and I think I'm satisfied. I think I understand the situation, and I'm personally in favor of the resolution that's proposed by staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, Commissioner Patel?
No, thank you.
Okay, then, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve grading review 25, oh, sorry, 2025-ex-01.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, I'll now read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council, except where specified otherwise. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk not later than 15 calendar days following the commission's decision. Exceptions include appeals for use permits and variances, which are six days, and tentative maps and advertising sign applications, which are 10 days. An application form and fee are required. You may call the city clerk for any questions at 415-508-2110. Okay, thank you. Next is items initiated by staff.
I don't have any. Do Julia, you or Jeremiah have anything? Go ahead.
We're having an open house for the former Bank of America site at 70 Old County Road on Saturday, September 6, and it's going to be at the property.
Okay.
So it'll have an update on the outreach to date and the current community feedback we've received and next steps.
Sorry, Saturday what?
September 6.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Items initiated by the commission, anything? Okay, none? Okay, well then, thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned until the next regular meeting of August 28, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.